So the time is eight twelve. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson could do the invocation, please?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Father God, we just thank you for your love and your protection. We praise you because you are worthy of our honor and praise. And Father God, we just invite you into this meeting tonight, and we ask that you would release your peace, your wisdom, and your wise counsel. And Father God, we just ask these things in Jesus' name. We pray, amen and amen.
Amen. Admin clerk should do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Farid. Councilwoman Guillaume. Councilman Hairston.
Here.
Councilman Haring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President.
Here. We have a quarrel. Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm on.
There's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the agenda is hereby adopted. And the only item on the agenda tonight is the continuation of the 2026 budget discussion. Council members should have received an updated copy of the budget. And we'll open the floor for discussions. Have councilmembers had an opportunity to review it? Or do you want to go the same way we went through it last night to make sure all the adjustments are there? It might seem better. Mr. Stewart. Are there any highlights of differences from the adjustments made, particularly as it relates to how much we're drawing down from the surplus?
From the reserve.
Correct. From the reserve.
Okay, so based on the adjustments that we made, one, we increased the tax rate. We increased the tax rate to the zero point three seven, I think it's three nine four seven. And a few adjustments that we did with regard to salaries. Other adjustment as it relate to specially, special events. We ended up with a deficit of eighty-nine thousand. It would be good if you could put the budget on screen.
Yep, it would be good if I was the co-host of the meeting, but I'm not. I don't have the ability to share. So, Mister, either Council Clerk or Mister Gray. There we go. Thank you.
But on the summary, if you scroll down.
One second. All right.
Yes.
So what we're scrolling down to?
So I'm just scrolling down to the deficit, just to show the amount that's there.
I mean, what, do you have a line number to scroll down to?
There you go.
Three oh two?
Yes. So at the end of the day, we ended up with the eight-nine thousand four twenty. And that's the amount I would recommend to be taken from reserve, given the additional or the additions that we made. However, you know, through our review tonight, we may be able to add or subtract other items that could either reduce this or totally eliminate it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll just go through these tabs again to make sure all the adjustments that we requested were included. And councilmembers, feel free to stop me and ask questions of the administration if you have them. Councilman Haring?
Yeah, because I did want to go over some of the revenue numbers also before we get into the detail.
Okay. All right, let's start there then.
Okay, so I guess I was going through it, and since we got the actuals now, I can see better where we at. So if you go look at personal property taxes at the very top of the revenue. And personal property taxes, we bought in, you're saying, okay, in twenty-four, we bought in three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and we're saying we're going to bring in, and we bought in three hundred and sixty-five thousand in twenty-twenty-five. But with the downturn in the economy, the layoffs, and the loss of the party city over in Woodmore Town Center, is it realistic that we're going to make this money, make this three sixty-five?
So for party city, for party city, the last billing that was done, and I should let you know that party city has actually filed bankruptcy. So their bill for twenty-twenty-five was approximately seven thousand dollars. So I would say if anything is going to be different, it's going to be down by seven thousand dollars. But, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, so this amount that we have, the three sixty-three, as you can see, is through to April twenty-twenty-five. And so we still have two more months of transmittals to come in. Actually, I got in transmittals today. So we know that this amount will be realized for twenty-twenty-six. Yes, I believe we will make this amount again.
Okay, I don't think so, but because like I said, with the downturn in the economy and with people being laid off, thousands of people being laid off, especially in this area, we have been hard hit by these layoffs. People are not going to be spending like they did before, and with the prices going up the way they are, you're not going to, I don't think you're going to get that to three sixty-five, but I don't think they're going to do it. Okay, now, you put in forty thousand dollars, the next line down, for personal property tax prior year? Why? We didn't get anything in twenty-four or twenty-five?
Okay, so, yeah, so, okay, so what I can tell you is that for twenty-twenty-five, we have actually budgeted to receive three forty-five. And to date, we are receiving, or to April, we have received approximately twenty thousand more than that. What I can tell you too is that a portion of those amounts should have been allocated to prior year because some of those are prior year monies coming in. So, yes.
The three sixty-three, you're saying some of that should be prior year?
It should be prior year.
So that number goes down even lower?
Well, at the end of the day, we have three sixty-three.
Okay, but I'm just looking at realistically, because if you're saying twenty-seven thousand dollars if that was prior year, then that'd be more in line with twenty-twenty-three, which we gave about twenty thousand dollars in prior year. We have twenty thousand dollars in prior year in twenty-five, which takes that number down to three forty, which makes it closer to FY twenty-four, and makes it closer to what you budgeted versus what you're budgeting for twenty-twenty-six.
Yes, but we're still expecting personal property tax in total to be up to that amount.
Yeah, but you're basically saying you're going to get over four hundred thousand dollars in total?
Yes.
And we've never gotten over four hundred thousand dollars in personal property taxes, looking at the actuals from twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. So why would we sit there and assume we're going to get four hundred thousand dollars in a downturn, in a recessionary year, with a downturn in the economy, in the rising prices and layoffs? I'm not understanding that.
So one other thing that you have to take into consideration when it comes to personal property tax, it's about the amount of funds that are, the assets that are held by businesses. So that's where the assessment comes in, and the fees that we charge based on their assessments. Unless most companies are going to cut back on inventory, that's where we may have an issue, but this is based on their assets.
But I know that, but my thing is this, and that's what I'm saying. If people are not going to spend and buy, they're not going to need as much inventory on hand, as well as the fact that you don't know what this president is going to do when it comes down to these tariffs. So we may not be getting inventory in like we used to get in, especially if there's a trade war between us and China. So either prices are going to go up so high that nobody's going to buy, nobody's going to want that, nobody's going to purchase the inventory, and inventory is going to sit there and go stale, they're not going to have any additional inventory, or they're not going to have any inventory at all. And I'm just saying, I think we're reaching right now with this number. But, you know, if the county wants to keep it at that, and we run into the same thing next year with another deficit, then we can do that. But I don't think we should be, we need to be more conservative with this budget than we need to be than anything else. So I do have an issue with that. We can move on to the next, income tax individual?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, we got nine hundred thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-four, we got six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And in twenty twenty-five, we're now at five hundred ninety-nine thousand. What makes you think we're going to get three hundred thousand dollars to last, at the, what is it, with a quarterly?
Every, it comes in every month.
Every month?
Except for December and April. So in August, which is not here, we actually received, I think, one eighty-three thousand. So that amount would add to this for, for May thirty-first, I should say, May thirty-first, we got one eighty-three in.
And that's for, so we get it monthly?
Yes.
So what did we get the month before?
That was April, so nothing came in.
So nothing came in in March?
In April.
No, I'm just asking, did anything come in in March?
Oh, in March. Yes, we would have gotten in.
When did we get it in March?
Could you hold a minute? Let me go back to March's report.
So let me ask a question. I see one eighty-three for hotel tax. And you're saying that one eighty-three, and we get one eighty-three for income tax too?
No, I'm saying this week, the last week, we got in one eighty-three for income tax.
Income tax, okay, so what did we get in March? And you say we get it monthly?
Hold a second. May one minute.
Well, you don't have to, I'm just curious, but I'm just asking again with this question again, with the, again with the economy and layoffs, and people not spending, and people not earning as much as they were before because they don't have jobs, is that a realistic number to say that we're going to get nine hundred thousand dollars for FY twenty-six? Because what I don't want is to say and pad this budget, and then next thing you know, everything, there's a big downturn, and we're going to be in a hole and having to raise, raise, pull from our reserves even more because we overstated revenue.
For income tax, March, we received two hundred and ten thousand.
Okay. All right, so let's, again, I'm looking at the economy and looking at where we're going as a, and as in a recessionary time, which is more than likely going to come up. Everybody's saying it's going to come, that means you're going to have less, that's saying with these layoffs and these job layoffs and everything else. And they're saying it's laying off more on private and private concern too, so. Building permit, building application fees, you have proposed twenty-eight hundred. What application fees are we looking at getting for any way of building permits? You had, we only got eight twenty-five in twenty-twenty-five.
So when there is, so when there's, when there are any form of permit application, there's a fee that we charge, and that fee I'm estimating to get to twenty-eight hundred dollars. Yes, I'm seeing here where from year to April, we're receiving eight twenty-five. But at the end of the day, it's definitely about the applications that come in.
But what do you see, where do you see us getting this, these building permit fees from? What projects do you see in Glenon's future that would generate these building permit fees? I mean, I'm trying to figure, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out. Because, I mean, we barely got eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, and we just got eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in twenty-twenty-five. And before that, we got a thousand and seventy-five, and before that, we got two hundred and twenty-five. And now we're saying we're going to get twenty-eight hundred. You budgeted fifty-nine twenty-five for twenty-twenty-five, and we're nowhere near that. So I'm just saying, what is the likelihood of, what do you, what do you see that would justify a twenty-eight hundred dollar budget number for that?
I think there are some developments coming through. I am not fully informed as to how many developments, especially for housing. But we could really look back at that number.
Okay, question with me, just out of curiosity. We know we got a code enforcement director. Don't y'all sit down with him and discuss, hey, we're looking at building permits, what do you foresee in the future in the way of building permits, and he can research that, and he can have all that information at hand instead of we having to keep on going back? It seems like y'all not utilizing the resources of the entire staff when y'all do these budgets because everybody's doing things and what you're assuming, but when you got a, somebody there that deals with building permits every day, he can probably say, he can probably pull up in the county and say, okay, these are the applications that's come in so far, that, and these are preliminary CSP, CSP plans that have come in that they want to build, they want to build something in the city. So I'm just like, it means, because it's like, as long as we got to go back and we got to research it, when the research should have been done before this budget comes out to this level. Okay, we can move on to permits commercial. I want to know, you got ten thousand dollars, what are we looking at in a way of commercial? I'm trying to figure out, we're going to get ten thousand dollars from the commercial permits? Because I know, I haven't seen no signs up yet in Glenon about any new building. Oh, no, we do got one sign. So where, I mean, where are we looking at?
All right, so for this.
I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. Council President, if I may?
Councilman Haring, do you have a question for Mr. Gray?
Maybe you can ask a question about the permits and what we, our future permits.
Yes, I'm sorry. Again, good evening, everyone. The, for the commercial, what we're looking at is from Ryan Homes. They had to delay, they had to delay their projects. So they're going to pick back up sometime in the fall for some more townhomes off of Hamlin. And also, we have five guys that's coming up in the Woodmore Shopping Center. So that's two projects there.
Okay, now, I'm glad you did say that. So Ryan Homes, which is a nationwide builder, has delayed their project until the fall?
Yes.
And see, and that's a sign of the economy, because no builder starts building if they think they're going to sell them. But I'm glad you brought that up. So that's what I'm talking about. All right, thanks a lot. Okay, now, the citations, they're taking up to one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. There's two questions I have for this. Okay, I'm assuming we're going to get that much money from the two speed cameras we have, the speed cameras we have on seven oh four and Brightsea Road?
Yes, this is coming from Red Speed.
That's what, that number's coming from Red Speed?
Yes.
Okay, now I want to ask another question, and I made, Chief can answer this, or City Manager can answer this. Who took the speed limit down in between those cameras from thirty-five on Brightsea Road to twenty-five? And from, I think, forty miles an hour to thirty-five on seven oh four? Because those are new signs. So, because basically what it is, is a speed trap, because it goes from thirty-five, and then next thing you know, once you hit Glenon, it drops down to twenty-five, then once you leave Glenon, it picks back up to thirty-five. So, and that's a, that's a county road, so I wanted, did the county do that, or did we do that? And I don't know. I don't know if I can give me an answer, but I would like to get an answer on that. Because if that's what, if that's what, that's what they're doing, I think that's not right at all, just to generate money. It looks like we set, we don't set a speed trap.
Councilman, I'll, I'll look into that, but I'm pretty sure that that was done by the county.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
This is Chief Bryant. Good evening, everybody. How you doing?
The Chief.
All right. Yes, that had to go through the county. That was part of agreement with Red Speed. They had to get permits through the county for the change of signs and stuff. So that's what took, that was the holdup in reference to that in the agreement with Red Speed. So, yeah, it went to the county.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Try the speed trap. All right, okay. Thanks a lot.
Yes, sir.
All right, appreciate it. If we can go down to, this is another thing we need to look into, the Pilot Housing Authority payment. We are supposed to be getting a payment from Glenon Housing Authority. It's a payment in lieu of taxes. And so we, there's usually a formula that they have to pay based on, you know, because we do trash pickup for them, lights and electricity. So y'all need to look into that formula and start billing them for that fee. They haven't paid that fee in years. And they shouldn't, and they're required to pay that fee because they don't pay property taxes. So they pay a splat fee in lieu of the taxes, and it's called a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes. So y'all need to look into that and see what it should be, and they need to start getting billed for it.
Okay, we looked into that.
Okay, now, the streetlights and sanitation, I just think people need to know that this has gone up because the assessments went up. So what did the streetlight assessments go up to? Per household?
What we have is the streetlight and sanitation.
I just want to know what the streetlight went up, went from what to what? From sixty-eight dollars to what?
We had an amount of, I think it was three, three twenty, and now we have three forty, which is taken into account all, both sanitation and light. But I must say further that with the sum of that we are collecting, we're still not covering both light and sanitation, which is disposable.
On, the citizens need to know why they're, why their rate is going to go up to whatever's going to go up to when they see it on the tax bill. So lights are how much per household? How much will be charged per household for lights?
I'm sorry, but I don't have the amount for individual. So it's three, it's going to be three forty, and it's going to be.
Three forties for light and trash?
No, for light and trash, for the year.
Four oh four?
Pardon me?
I thought it went up to four oh four. Isn't that what's in your, that isn't what's in your narrative?
No, it's at three forty.
It can't be three forty.
A minute.
So it's three forty, so it went from three oh one, three forty, so you took up each one, or I don't know how much you took up each one. I know it's thirty-nine, but people need to know, paying for lights, because it used to be like sixty-eight dollars for lights and two, whatever it was, two eighty-three or something like that, two thirty-seven for trash.
So it's forty-seven, so it's forty-seven sixty for the year.
Yeah, but I still need to know what's, how much we, how much we assessing people for each item. They have a right to know how much they've been assessed for lights, and how much they need to be assessed for trash. So then, then really, you should have that footnoted in the budget so that it can be transparent, so that they know, because we've always had it footnoted in the budget. This is, this is, you're getting a special assessment, this much for lights, this much for trash. And I think that needs to be put noted in the budget so that they know, the citizens have a right to know and see.
The light is two ninety-two forty for the year.
All right, that's it for me on that page. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm done.
Any other councilmembers have questions relating to revenue? All right, then we'll move on to the different tabs. The admin budget. Are there any questions as it relates to the admin budget? Councilwoman Joan, I saw Councilwoman Joan saying, and I'll come to you, Councilman Haring.
Thank you, Council President. I still have an issue with the events for the administration. They have events down here. Code three, three, thirty-five hundred dollars. What is that? Sustainable environment, small business, I guess that all relates. I mean, I don't, I don't remember the city, you know, doing anything along those lines. Maybe it was a different title. I understand the Grinch who stole Christmas, that was the Christmas thing, and then the holiday Thanksgiving turkeys, I understand that. And then May Day. What do we, what does the city do on May Day? Because I don't remember an event entitled May Day.
Over the years, we have been fishing to find out what are the different programs, or what are the different events that admin does. This list here was curated by the city manager, and I think the mayor, especially May Day. I think that was curated by her. But we are open to any suggestions that may be out there of events that we could get involved in, especially if the more senior councilmembers could provide that information for us.
My question is, once again, you have, they have down here, maybe uh the city manager can answer this question. Code dash thirty-five hundred, sustainable environment, small business. I don't know, what, what event is that? And then May Day, what, when, when have they had, uh what day was May Day on? Last year, and what did they do?
Good evening. I I think there is a further adjustment that needs to be made for this particular category.
Breaking up, I can't understand you.
My apologies, uh Councilwoman Jones, I think there needs to be a further breakdown uh and and further explanation for that uh as, as it relates to code, it's sustainable environment, small businesses. As of now, I would, I can confirm the Grinch that stole Christmas twelve K and the holiday Thanksgiving turkey giveaway.
So since no one can give a uh explanation as to what these other two are, I think they need to be removed.
I do agree.
Okay, so, so the, the Grinch that stole Christmas, have we had that before?
Yes, that can stay. We've, we've had that, we had that for the last three years.
Is that different from the Polar Express?
I th- I thought it was Polar Express Grinch who stole Christmas, because in Polar Express, they had the Grinch uh T-shirts and stuff on, and they had the Grinch there, and a, a, a big Grinch, so I, I assume that the Grinch who stole Christmas and Polar Express are the same thing. So if we wanna retitle that, so that it'll be understandable, uh I'm, I'm fine with that, but anything that, you know, no one can give an explanation for, or when, like I said, on May Day, what, what day was that, and what did the city do? The code three, the code dash thirty-five hundred, sustainable environment, small businesses, what, I, I don't remember that either last year. Somebody else, I mean, I might be, may not recall, but I don't, I don't recall e- either of those two events in the city of Glenard.
Yes, Councilwoman Joseph, okay, uh the Grinch that stole Christmas uh was formerly the Polar Express. Uh and then uh I do suggest that we keep the holiday Thanksgiving uh turkey and adjust that down accordingly.
I agree, but I I'm only one council person.
You say adjust that down accordingly, what, what are we talking about? Uh one, is the, was the Grinch stole Christmas twelve thousand dollars last year, and two, when we say bring it down quarterly, what are we, what are we talking about?
No, I'm sorry, I, I, I agree that leaving the, the, if, if this is what the budget was last year, if it was somewhere around eleven thousand to do the Grinch who stole Christmas or Polar Express, then we can leave that at twelve K.
Okay.
And then the other event, the turkey giveaway, if, if, if the budget came in thirty-five hundred, and we need another extra five for this year, then that's fine. But this code thirty-five hundred and this uh May Day for four K, that's seventy-five hundred dollars for something that we, nobody knows what any, what, what anyone does. Or the event, has no recollection of the event.
Okay. Anybody, anybody opposed to these two items that no one knows about coming up? Take it out.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just, can we just uh enable the special events for the kids, just call it Children's Holiday Party, or Children's Holiday Event? Because it's, I mean, they may change this theme, we, we stick into a theme, but you know, last year was a Polar Express, this year is a Grinch. Can we just say Children's Holiday Party? That way they can do whatever theme they wanna do.
Okay. Was it all Mrs. uh Councilwoman Jones?
Uh the other, only other thing was the um executive assistant, uh we haven't determined what we're gonna do there.
Uh I guess I should ask council members, are, are we going to have to finish that executive session after this meeting? To make that determination?
It's fine with me.
Okay, so we'll hold that. Was it all Councilwoman Jones?
Uh yes, Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Council Mayor?
Yeah, what, oh no, I don't have anything in administration.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll move on to make those adjustments. Move on to legal. That was changed and adjusted to seventy thousand. Any other comments here? Okay. Cable budget? No real changes here outside of the um seventeen eight thousand. All right, media and comms, any questions?
Uh yes, Mr. President, I, and, and, you know, I guess I saw the job description for what the part-time person is gonna do, so I'm just like I mean, how much work is they actually gonna be down? I mean, I think, I mean, I saw what it said she was gonna do, and I think, I don't think the rest of the council have seen the job description, so maybe I don't need to look at it. Um before y'all decide to vote on this, I'm not sure, but I just think that um yeah, I'm just curious what, what, what they're gonna do. I'm just, I, you know, I, I mean, I just, I saw it, but I just need more detail on what exactly they're gonna do with, I mean, the job description says what they're gonna do, but I'm just like in the city of Glenon, how is that gonna help in the city of Glenon? What we're gonna get out of this position that we aren't already getting? So that's my, did I have a question on that?
Yeah, anyone wanna answer that question? Um, Mr. Simpson, Mr. Ward?
Uh I believe Ms. Ward is on, she can go into further detail.
Good evening, everyone. So basically, the position here is just supporting as an assistant for myself. Um with consideration to the, the workload to be more effective. It would just help with increasing the demand of ensuring that the assignments are timely, and that they're accurate, that we're consistently providing the messaging that we need uh for the residents and coordinating. So we wanna also open up to having more community partnerships and collaborations. Um so this individual would be supporting me pretty much as a backup on the media and communications departmental side, if that helps to answer that question.
So um yeah, thank you. So when you say partnerships, partnerships in what way?
So uh I did speak with an individual today uh related to one of the schools, and they were speaking about partnering more with the city. Um basically having more constant communication and reaching the residents. So basically, this individual will be helping to amplify our messaging and having more of a local impact in the community and providing and promoting some more transparency. So where I can support more of the um administration, supporting more of the cable management, this individual can support me with social media and things of that nature.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions for media and comms? Okay, we'll go to court, code enforcement? Are there any questions on code enforcement?
Uh yes, question, this vacant position, you're taking it up to fifty-one thousand dollars? Man, I'm trying to figure out how did they even get down to how did they get down to forty thousand? To go up to fifty thousand dollars?
I, I am not, I am not sure. Um I don't know if this was a partial period um position, I'm not sure, sorry.
So maybe it was a part, part of a year as opposed to the whole year?
Yes, I think that's what was um in last year. I think that's what we had um we had accounted for.
That's what was budgeted in last year, forty thousand?
Yes, let me just make sure again.
Can you check the, the pay scale for what that should be coming in now?
Hold a second. Code enforcement. No, when I look at the budget for last year, no. I had fifty-one oh thirty-eight for that position.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't wanna take it off from this air, Councilman here.
Because I'm looking at the approved budget that you sent us, and it says forty-eight thirty. So we need to go up to fifty-one.
Yeah, I, I think that was um that was an error. I think that was an error.
What, forty thirty, forty-eight thirty?
The four, the forty-eight thirty, yes.
No, because when you sent us this budget back in you sent us the budget in February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and it has forty-eight thirty in it. After we voted on it, you sent it out. As you can, please say a tap. Well, now, that's, that's a budget amendment. Let me look at the budget amendment. It might have been something, uh, might have changed it on a budget amendment. Code enforcement. Yeah, but now this is prior to you making a budget amendment. It was forty-eight thirty, now we're going up to
Can I just add, what's the difference between uh the new code enforcement and the vacant code enforcement? Shouldn't they, I mean, I know one has been here last year, so they're getting the code increase, but I wouldn't think a new position that's not filled would get an increase, right? Would it? Well, possibly, I, I take that back, sorry.
The market.
Yeah.
Are we for certain that this is the right step for this position, I guess?
That's what I'm, that, and that's what I'm saying, because I'm looking at the email we got on September the ninth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Stewart sent us the approved uh twenty twenty-five budget on September the ninth, twenty twenty-four. Looking at that budget that was approved by the council, I'd be voted on it. It has that salary at forty-eight, forty thousand eight thirty. Now I'm trying to figure out how, jump all the way up to where it is now.
So in the discussion we had earlier, um we realized that this was an error. And so we made an adjustment, because those two positions should be earning the same amount. Um but we put it at fifty-one thousand four fifty, because we were carrying the same as last year.
Uh, Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, I'm also confer with uh HR, this is a twelve
You're breaking, I'm sorry, you're breaking up, but it's like every other word.
Apologize, I'm not sure, I'm actually in the office as well.
That, 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 when you're projecting your voice like that, that, that works.
Okay, my apologies. Uh I just confirmed with HR, then uh from our early discussions, this is on the pay scale as a uh twelve step one. Uh I do believe that forty, eighty, eight thirty may have just been an era, from what I understand. It is consistent with the uh uh other code enforcement officers, or a- as it relates to e- entry.
It was an error in twenty twenty-five?
Yes, I believe so.
See, I guess my thing is, when you're doing to jump something up ten thousand dollars, I mean, there should be more of a, a explanation and a justification on why you're doing it. If it's an error, you need to tell it's an error, I shouldn't have to be finding this stuff. Yeah, I mean, that's a big jump for a code enforcement officer, when most of the other code enforcement officers start away at forty-nine, somewhere like, like that.
I, I do believe if we look at twenty-three, twenty-four, uh then we have FY actual. Um again, for whatever reason, FY twenty-five approved budget is showing that particular number, but that, that appears to be an error. The fifty-one four fifty is actually uh on the scale as a non-management twelve one.
I guess y'all keep on saying that forty-eight thirty is an error, but I'm just like y'all put it in the budget, y'all um so you're saying yeah, I'm still trying to figure out why you keep on saying that's an error. So when y'all were uh trying to hire for that position, is that the posi, is that the salary that I gave people?
Uh I would have to recall some of the records, uh but a- again, uh I don't believe that forty-eight thirty was an accurate num, accurate number at the time. Um if you, if you look at the other two code enforcement positions, and we have one that's more senior than the other, um the starting uh salary is what we have at that, what we have at that uh twelve step one, grade twelve step one.
Okay, any other questions on this, Councilman here?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Legislative budget? Questions on the legislative budget? All the changes were made? Finance.
Yes, why do, why is there overtime line item in there? There's never has been before.
Okay, so we find that um. Some projects sometimes require um our staff to do overtime. Um, this is the, the. The, like doing audit periods and other events, we have the team doing overtime.
But the only person eligible for overtime. Would I, I think would be, now who's eligible for overtime?
Both staff are eligible for overtime.
So. Aren't they? I'm sorry, Councilman, you go ahead first.
Hey, no, you know, you're, you're, you're thinking the same thing I'm thinking. I thought the staff account was exempt.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, but I, I don't have that information. I, I, as far as I'm concerned. Both staff are not exempt.
Well, you may want to check with HR on that, but I think the staff account is exempt.
Alright, I will reveal.
Yeah, please do, cause I, I'm, I'm with Councilman Herring on that one. I don't, at the very least, I know, I, I would. Think the staff count is exempt. And possibly. The assistant, but. It depends.
Alright, so I'll review with her.
Uh, Mr. Simpson?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Ms. Schultz will be available on the line. Uh, but both positions are non-exempt, uh, what she was able to verbally say. She, she just doesn't have connectivity just yet.
Y'all not to show me that because, show me her job description because I know that position was exempt for the longest time. And the person that, in that position before never got overtime. Cause it was an exempt position. So when did it go to non-exempt?
Oh, I'll work on getting that answer for you, and I do believe Ms. Schultz will be on the line too to be able to provide some further clarity.
Is she in the office or she at home?
She's on her way home now, sir.
Okay, so she won't even have her fingers on, on, on the files to see.
Uh, I believe she does have access to some of that information uh via laptop and uh can pull up uh some of that. But I'll be able to confirm shortly.
No, I'm, I'm just curious, cause in twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, there was no overtime and everything got done. It seemed like that's, that's starting, that's starting to get be a habit in Glen Arden with this overtime.
Yeah, we got the, when she gets on to answer that question, we'd come back to it whenever she's able to log in. Log on, um. Are there any other questions for? Finance? I didn't answer, come back to it. Alright, I think we cleared out everything in the executive budget, so that's. Police department. Any questions here?
Yeah, I got, I got a, I got a couple of questions and it's, it's the same thing with this overtime. Taking this overtime up to thirty thousand dollars. Now. We were told, again, you know, it was taken up because you got caught and everything else. When it comes to this overtime. So I would like to see. Honestly justification for this. So I would like to see the uh leave slips. Not only for police, but also for public works. Just supposed to say what they're putting, what they're getting overtime for. Also, when I went to uh Merlin Case Search, I pulled up. All the cases for twenty twenty five. And there were nineteen cases in the courts for the city of Glen Arden. With eighteen of them being code enforcement. And none for police, technically, none for police. So I'd just like to see what the overtime was for, that we spent twenty five thousand evenly. On overtime. In twenty twenty five, so I'd like to see basically what they, what the overtime. Cause I, like I said, again, I, when I would pull up case search, I didn't see any cases for. When on police department, lots of ga- lots, lots of cases for code enforcement, they doing their job, they out there writing citation after citation. So like I said, it was nineteen of them on, on, on it, on the dock, unless it's, unless it's in, uh, another court handling them or somewhere else, I don't see.
Chief Ryan, Chief Ryan real quick. Uh, that being a different system for the police department. Um, but we should be able to get the information. Um, also be advised, um, a lot of overtime, we're still short staff. Um, so some of the overtime came from being short staff. Um, and we'd be losing another officer next week, um, going to a different agency. And once again, we ran out of overtime, so I had officers working, um. Mandatory comp time twelve hour shifts, so I'll be addressing that later in upcoming months. Um, once I see how I'll be trying to reschedule, um, working with less officers. So I'll, I'll have you, um, update the city council in reference to that. Thank you.
Councilman Harry, is it, was that all?
That, that was it, yeah.
Okay, I, I have a question. I'll, I'll wait until after Vice President Ferguson.
Yes, um, I had mentioned on your, on the, the last meeting that I thought that the, uh, my mouth should come down as well. Also was mentioned that, um. That, um, some of that was used, um, when the officers, uh, went to court, um. And, um, so my thing is I. And I don't understand why, if, if they know that they have a court, that usually you have, um, ample time, you, you might know a month or. Or, um, we have a summons or whatever, so when, if they are scheduled to be off of that, that, that time. And they know that they have court coming up, why can't they, uh, adjust their schedule so that they will be working? And that, um. Doing, um, overtime. And, um, again, I, I just think that is from the history. Of, um, the use of overtime. And the amount of. Staff or officers that were there, sometimes the same amount that is now. And only two thousand or the, the most I saw was four thousand in a year. Um, used, so, um. I also would, you know, if they have court, um. Summons. And then they're putting in for overtime, then that, um, summons need to be, uh, in their file. You know, w- with their claim or request for overtime.
We don't make the court schedules, um. They send, they send, we have to send a list to them. We don't, we're not in charge of, uh, Prince George's County District Court and they scheduling. They, they schedule twenty four municipalities and Prince George's County Police Department. So what they do is they send for our roster and they make the schedule and they send it to us. Um, most times we're also making arrests, um, the night before. On the, the day of, sometimes they have to go to court for that, so it's totally different. Um, as far as officers responding to court and so forth. If also worked, the midnight toward duty, he made an arrest. And got off from work and have to go to court, you know, it's a whole different setup, so we're not in charge of that, we don't run that, so, and I sure can't, um. Tell a district, um. Attorney's office and the judge system how to run the, um. Scheduling for court, so there's a whole system in place, but, um, once again, um, with overtime, whatever it is, I'm through with it. Make it happen. Thank you very much.
Vice President Ferguson, was that all?
I mean, I guess it all at this point because I wasn't finished. And, um, just for the record, um, normally there's a process. Either you ask for permission to speak. Um. You know, raise your hand or something, just busting in. Is, is, is disrespectful. Um, so I really wish that that would stop. Um, cause I was not finished, actually, I don't, I, um, it's intervening, um. And you know, I lost my thought, so. Again, if you want to speak, raise your hand or just. Council President May I? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Uh, Chief?
Uh, yes, I just raised my hand. Um, thank you very much. Um, I apologize for that. Um, so my hand is raised now, so I, I just wanted to make sure I answered the question. Um, there's a lot of things, um. That we can discuss later in reference to this, but, uh, I do apologize, so. I did raise my hand, so I apologize. Thank you very much.
Uh, uh, just a, I'm sorry, Rush, 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 go ahead.
Um. Thank you, Chief Ryan.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a follow up on the, um. Chief, on the, uh, recruitment efforts. I mean. Is there, I mean, what, what are we seeing there? Uh, why? Are we not be, are we not able to? Recruit. Officers, or what efforts are we putting in to recruit new officers so that we can be fully staffed?
Um, uh, the, the biggest problem, like I said before, is, um, is, is the pay. And, um, the biggest thing, the retirement benefits, um, like most of the agencies have, um. They have, um, most of them have the, um. The legal, sir, law enforcement, re- retirement benefits and, um, starting pay, starting pay, uh, for most of the jurisdictions. Um, is higher, um, than ours. Um, most of the officers make what our sergeants make. And, um. At every pay, at every rank, um, the pay in surrounding jurisdictions, you know, pretty much higher. Um, for example, Chevrolet, I think Chevrolet pays like, um. Ten to fifteen thousand more, um. District County Pleasant, um, officers that's leaving, um, next Saturday, he's going to Chevy Chase, um. I know that is higher, so you know, um, and they retirement. So it's, it's different benefits, people trying to take care of the families and so forth, you know, for their future and stuff, so that's what I'm fighting for, for these officers. Um, try to get them comparable pay, try to keep them here, um, so that that was the recruiting effort, effort. Also with my sergeant vacancy announcement, um, with that starting pay, um, I haven't had any outside, um. Takers in reference to that, I just had, um, internal, um, applicants for their sergeant position due to the pay. Um, so there are other things I'm trying to do in reference to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. President, I did actually do have a few more questions, um, on this budget.
Sure, go ahead.
Under special events, y'all have Harvest Day Rewind. I thought that was under administration at one time, or is that coming out or is that going in? I'm not sure what's. The Harvest Day, the special events Harvest Day Rewind? Is that coming out or is that going, what is that doing? Cause I know that used to be under administration, so is the police department taking that over?
Uh, no, that, that's, that's not under us, um.
Oh, I didn't think so.
Yeah, that's not under the police department. Uh, I remember it got merged, um, with the administration one year, but we never had that, that was never our project.
Wasn't it, wasn't it that it was basically the same th- thing as, uh, the Chuckle Treat? Cause they're like back to back or something like that?
No, they was, um, one year we had it on the same day. And so for some reason it got merged and it, it got placed with ours. For some reason, but, um, I didn't, you know, I didn't have a problem with it, so. It was, you know, we dealt with it. Um, another thing that need be added on there, I usually do, um. Annual police picnic that I don't see on there, um, if we can add that on, instead of Harvestes. And the annual police cookout.
Okay, so I'll, I'll table that into after Councilman Herring is done and then we can address that.
Uh, yeah, then a, a, another thing I, I, I do have an issue is again is with the gasoline, um. I just can't see going up to, if we only spent like going on maybe about fifty thousand dollars. Maybe five thousand dollars this year, going up to eighty thousand dollars for gasoline, um. I'm just, I'm just, I just don't understand how, I mean, well, I guess the biggest issue is that we went from a hundred and forty one thousand dollars down to thirty nine thousand dollars. Uh, when we started looking into it, it seemed like the, 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 the gas usage dropped dramatically, um. And so I just, I'm just trying to figure out what's, what's what, what's going on, um. Cause it should be about the same, if you're patrolling the same, you got the same shifts and everything else, it should be about the same. You're going to court the same amount of time, so I'm just, this fluctuation in the gas and then we're going to take it up to eighty thousand dollars. And I think that's quite, I think that's excessive, but we only look at maybe fifty thousand dollars now. Um, in gas, so that's another issue I had with that. I do want to say this about, you know, we are talking about the pay, the pay, the pay, you know, we cannot, we've already broke the city. We broke the city when we ended up doing everything we did and we ended up with a deficit. We don't bring in enough revenue now to pay. What we, what we, what we paying now, and we had to take up taxes again to meet our, meet our financial obligations. Now, the, the, the employees asked for a retirement account, so they, we put two hundred thousand dollars aside in a retirement account for a retirement fund. Now, if you would have took that two hundred thousand dollars and divvied it up. Forty ways, you really gave each employee five thousand dollars. But y'all chose, y'all wanted, y'all wanted the retirement account, you got the retirement account. You can't have both, you can't have both. Because we can't afford both. Um, like I said, we've, we, we, we had to take taxes up because we ran into a, a half a million dollar deficit. Because we don't bring in enough money and I, and I'm not going to con- continue to tax the citizens. Out of existence when we, you know, are. Continually, continually, you know, taking up, taking up salaries and we can't really afford it. I mean, we just can't. And I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, again, you gotta, you gotta pick one or the other. You've got the retirement package, you got the two hundred thousand dollars, you got it. You know, we could have took that same two hundred thousand dollars and gave everybody a five thousand dollar increase. But y'all got what you asked for. But you can't get both because we can't afford it, so we take, we do that again and take salaries up again, we're gonna have to raise taxes again next year, because the taxes we raising this year. Only covers what we had this year. The retirement account. Goes up again three percent next year, so we gotta cover that expense, we probably gonna have to do another tax increase. For next year to cover the, cover the retirement fund. I need to ask Ms. Schultz this while she's on the line. Ms. Schultz and, um, and this is about the retirement since she's on the line now. Can you tell me if most municipalities have retirement accounts?
Ms. Schultz? She may have stepped away from her computer.
Uh, when she come back on, I, 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 I'll ask her, I just want, but I, I just wanted to say that. You know, I mean, we can't break the city, we not gonna, I'm not gonna break my citizens. Not gonna see them have, have, have a serious financial obligation. You know, because I'm, I'm telling you right now, and it just mean, they may think I'm cold hearted, but no one is obligated to work for the city of Glen Arden, nobody is. And you know, we can only pay what we can pay, and if that's not, if you can't feed your families with that, then I, I honestly support anybody. Walking away from this job and finding something better. I support that in, with any job, if you can get a bad opportunity, take it. Definitely take it, because I'm, I'm about to taking care of your family and, and living as comfortable as you possibly can. You know, we can't do that, you know, but, because my citizens gotta live comfortably as they possibly can too, so. Um, alright, thank you.
Chief?
Yeah, uh, just real quick, um, see, I got my hand up that time. Thank you VP Ferguson on that, learned to use this thing pretty well. So, uh, real quick, uh, Councilman Harry, uh, in, in reference to that, and I understand, I totally agree, and I tell the officers that all the time, um. But, um, it's just like we talk about with gas and we talk about pain and all that type of stuff, um. And people fail to realize the city is growing, um. Getting larger, the development, if you look around the city of Glen Arden, um, continuously to grow and so forth. Um, you get more calls for service, um, you look at our call, we get, we get a, um, it's called a computer assisted dispatch report we get every day. Um, that we print out, if you look at that over the past few years, we get, um. Um that we print out, if you look at it over the past few years, we get um more calls for service. We average about hmm twenty seven calls, I'd say twenty four calls a day um for service. So we get more calls for service and stuff, um and what it does, um when we don't have the manpower to actually do it, um. You know, we try to support our citizens, the officer is going to respond to the calls. And 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 the big thing that um we do that other agencies and other municipalities don't do. We run twenty four hours. A lot of these municipalities, they shut down at twelve o'clock. A lot of these, they shut down twelve o'clock, two in the morning and stuff, and some of them have um equal, more people than we do. But you know, um we run twenty four hours and you know, we we make it work, you know. But um it's starting to be a strain on the officers and stuff, you know, because we got, I I most definitely committed to our citizens, you know, we all took the oath. I'm even out there with the officers um answering call for service and stuff because. Our primary goal is protect our citizens and serve our citizens and stuff, so they out there doing that. I'm out there doing it with them. So um that's we got taken consideration over the years. I mean, call for service, the city is growing, getting larger and stuff. So um when you talk about gas, when you talk about overtime and call for service and um benefits and so forth. And a lot of these um municipalities and stuff, as far as retirement benefits and stuff. A lot of them have just the the police retirement benefits. Um I wasn't here, but um Captain Jackson said, he said years ago, he tried to. Get the city of Glen Arden to enact the um the L O S R law enforcement um retirement. And that fell by the wayside. I think he had different council members at the time, so I don't know what's going on with that or what's happening. I think they tried to reintroduce that, um but um Ms. Schultz, she she introduced um Mutual of America and some other things, so.
Excuse me, I'm finally online. I'm sorry, I was, I I'm on my phone in the car, so please forgive me.
Yeah, so we got Ms. Schultz on now, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Ms. Schultz.
I'm sorry, I'm in my car online, so bear with me. First question, first question, talking, let's go back to co, to um to the non exempt and exempt for the. Staff assistant and assistant staff assistant and finance. When the P D, when the P Ds were were redone by both of the. Employees that were in 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 the position at the time, and that was Ms. Young and Ms. Ross. I had every P D that we did reviewed by the attorney. The attorney reviewed the P Ds and said that for what they did, he would not say that they were exempt. He however, said he would not change them to non exempt until miss, they were gone. But they were no longer on the rolls, especially Ms. Ross. And I'm sorry, especially Ms. Young. So therefore, when the two, once those two former employees left, the positions were put in non exempt uh based on attorney information.
Okay.
Yeah, can I just follow up on that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
When when y'all are doing things that, that y'all need to let this council know that you're taking actions like. Because those are actions, again, you're changing a job description from what we approved. The attorney recommended it, the attorney recommended it, we should be told that so that we can know. That they're they're moving from exempt to non exempt, then we can actually talk to the attorney and find out exactly why he said that, but um.
I wasn't aware of that, since I didn't think of it as a change in duties or change necessarily in job description. And this was done two years ago at least, I didn't, I take, wasn't aware that I should let you know that the attorney. Is recommending to change the position and that, that's my, that's on me.
Yeah, I mean, we voted, we vote on these positions as part of the budget and as part of the, as as a, as an ordinance. And so if there's a change that needs to be made, we need to know that you're going to make that change because then we can drill down on it and maybe even modify it so that. It can be made an exempt, and if we want exempt, it can be made exempt. But um I I another question that I ask is about retirement programs in other municipalities. Did you do research on?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Some, some, there are some municipalities that have no retirement at all. There, the majority of the municipalities that we, that I, because I reviewed all of them. Use State of Maryland's retirement. And if you recall, sir, when um Mr. Bratton was there and we and President Curtis slight. Asked that we did some, do some review on the retirement systems. State of Maryland require, had three requirements to join them. One, you had to pay a fee for them to review our city. To see if we would even be eligible for us to be covered by State of Maryland, that was the first one. Back, I don't know, four years ago, three years ago, that was like between ten and twenty thousand dollars for them to just review our, our records. The second was, at least half of the staff had to sign up for. State of Maryland retirement, and State of Maryland retirement is optional. The sec, the last was, if all of State of Maryland, if so many of our employees dropped State of Maryland. Doing every year during, before a five year period ended, then they would drop us. We would no longer be eligible to be covered under State of Maryland, and we would have to pay a penalty. Those were the three options or the three requirements to be on the State of Maryland. And when I brought that to council way back when, they decided to stay with Mutual of America. Mutual of America, Mutual of America was already in place when I got there, so I don't know how long you had it before I got there.
Okay, and I remember all of that with the State of Maryland, um because we don't, I mean, even right now, we got what, how many people participate in ten? In our retirement?
We have ten in the whole population of forty three that actually pay into the four fifty seven, correct? The two point five is what we pay.
Okay, all right. And that's why I'm saying we're being broke, busted to discuss it because no one is even even utilizing the plan and we've changed it. And no one's going to utilize the plan. Again, I mean, that's money we could have put in their pocket, but if they want to wait till sixty two and a half to get their money, more power to them. Um I, but I'm, I don't know when, we can't break the city doing it, and I, and and I think we really need to roll that back. Um to what it, either what it was before or do like I suggested, if they put in four, we match four and leave it like that. Um this is entirely, we we can't afford this, this plan, so. You know, I mean, people got to do what they got to do, you know, you got to go, we, we got to go what's going, where where it's going to take you. I mean, where where you can take care of your family, you got to go where the money go. Um you know, we just, we just not that, we not that, so. All right, thank you, um Mr. President, I'm done with the police.
Okay, so are, are there any changes to this budget that I missed? We talked, but we didn't change anything, so are we leaving it as is? For once? Twice?
I said, um, um, Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
What does the overtime look like?
The overtime was. Thirty thousand dollars. Last year it was, yeah, twenty five thousand dollars.
I say what I say, I could, I mean, I suggest it's twenty five thousand, really twenty, but. That's just me. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who concur with leaving it at last year's level at twenty five?
I do.
Any opposition to taking it down to twenty five? Since I have two. Okay. Councilman Jones?
So two people agreed to take it down to twenty?
Twenty five.
Only two councilpersons?
Well, no, I, I said there were two, so I took it as a a motion in the, almost like a second. And I asked if there was any opposition, and I didn't hear any, so I took it down to twenty five.
I I I'm in, I'm opposed, I think it should stay what it is until we did, till the police department can come back to us and. Show us next year that they use the entire um the monies, so I'm opposed.
Okay, uh Councilman Hairston? Councilman Hairston?
Sorry, hey, me sorry, I was on my phone, I couldn't get the lock open, it's moving too fast. But I'm, I concur, I'm good.
You concur with what, thirty or twenty five?
I can go to twenty five.
Okay. They at the same level as well? I understand Councilman Jones' point, I just understand it from the opposite of it. If it's always been twenty five thousand dollars. Then I don't see a need to, to really push the thirty thousand dollars. Although I do think that we do need to um figure things out so that we can recruit some officers. All right. Move it on. Uh what is this? Public Works, any questions on Public Works?
Uh yeah, um their overtime too, I'm going to look at their overtime too because I'm. It just seem like that's, that's the new thing in 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 uh 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 England, is put overtime line in and then use overtime, all we have to is maximum. And it seem like it's, it's, it's constant across the board um to supplement income. So I would like to see what their overtime is because. Let me see. Yeah, they taking it up to.
They're taking it down.
Taking it down, but still, it was nine thousand all the years before, they actually used only nine thousand all the years before, and then they using more. And now they want to take it down to twelve thousand, and I think it should just stay at nine. I I I honestly do, I mean, I'm. I mean, what more are they going to be, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what overtime is for, they leave at three o'clock. Every last one of them leave at three o'clock, so what overtime are they going to be doing, unless we have an event?
I have quite a lot of events on the books.
Okay, and um. Some of the biggest events, I mean, you don't need four people for some of these events. But you know, I, that's, that's my opinion there. Um one other thing on um on that is. The Director of Public Works, okay, why are we doing a cost of living adjustment when nobody's in that position? I don't understand that. We don't, there's no one in the position, the 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 salary should be eighty, whatever that is, eighty four fifty. Or it really should be eighty one fifty five, more eighty one five five four, but the approved budget for that, for twenty five was eighty four. Fifty, and that's where it needs to stay. I can't see why we're taking it up to eighty six, why we putting, doing cost of living adjustment for a position that nobody's in. And I think that needs to stay right at the F twenty five budget level. And you need to, whoever we bring in can't exceed that, but I still don't think we should be bringing nobody in at the top, at that top level. Because that's what they're doing in Glen Arden, you put a budget number in and they give you that salary right off the bat instead of trying to. Give you less than that and give you something to work toward after your six month probation.
Are we actively? Advertising the Director of Public Works role? Or are we relying upon Alf? Or yourself to have doing, doing roles?
Uh yes, Council President, uh it is open and we have, uh as you remember, we had one candidate to unfortunately uh backed out the last minute. We just haven't, we have not seen any uh additional candidates at this particular point. But we, we are actively searching.
And and is there a reason why we're, I mean, so the actual was eighty one in twenty twenty four? So how did we get to eighty six?
Uh I I do believe that there was a intent to do a cost of living there, but. Uh we, I certainly understand uh Councilman Herron's point and we can bring that down.
To the twenty twenty four level?
As long as it's on that page, which I believe it will be, yes.
Councilman Herron, did you have any other questions?
Yes, I asked a question about what positions were open and you have. And the maintenance tech one is open, is that, and let me ask Ms. Schultz, is maintenance, is the maintenance tech one position open, Ms. Schultz?
Yes, yes, sir, the, both maintenance texts are are open till fill.
Open it, tech one and tech three?
Tech one and tech. I think tech one and tech two, there's a tech one and a tech two, and the the tech one is a new position that was approved last year that was never filled. And the tech two is a backfill, and the both positions are open till filled. Yes, sir.
So why, again, are we, for the tech one, why are we giving a cost of living adjustment to them and taking the salary up in it, if it's. Uh a a new position, why are we already bringing them in, it was at forty eight seventy nine, forty eight seventy nine, then it jumped up to forty eight. I mean, forty two one oh five because it hasn't been filled, then you take it up to forty three, three six eight, that needs to roll back to forty eight seven nine.
As, as long as it's, it's on the scale, whatever, the pay scale that we use, uh we can, we can hire at, at at the level, the lower level that's on the scale, yes, sir.
Yeah, but Glen Arden don't do that, we need to put in the budget what they, what they should, they should be coming in at an entry level position. For the tech one position, and it's forty eight seventy nine, so I think we need to put that in the budget, I don't know what the, what the going rate, where that is on the scale. You need to put it on whatever the pay scale says it should be on.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we're going to give, minimum adjustment to people that are not here, we taxing the people for, for salary that. People ain't even in the positions, giving the cost of living adjustment to nobody, just holding spaces, holding, making placeholders, I think that needs to come down too. And the same thing with the tech three or the tech, whichever other tech it is, whatever other tech it is, that needs to come down too because. Giving cost of living adjustments for pe, for vacant positions is ridiculous.
Yes, sir.
So what is vacant? Is it this one?
Tech one, the tech one is vacant.
And you want to put it down to this level?
Or whatever, whatever it should be, whatever's closer to that on a, on a salary scale.
Yeah, uh Ms. Schultz, can you confirm that it, that is the forty thousand eight seventy nine?
I I can't right now, no sir, because I'm in the car, on my phone.
I apologize.
But I will, I will let you know first thing, I'll let you know tomorrow.
Can either Mr. Simpson or Mr. Stewart confirm?
I'm on scale now, and I will get the information for you in just a moment.
Councilman Herron, did you have any other questions on this page?
Uh um, no, I'm good. Just like I said, like I said earlier, just the overtime, I need to, I need to see what's, what's happening with that overtime. I would like to get that, that pull as too, the overtime lead and overtime request slips.
Uh Mr. Simpson, when you get that number, just let me know. We're supposed to be looking at that and. Oh, there, oh, we, we come back to this real quick, uh. So I take it we're going to keep this in here because they're both. Answer, and we're waiting on that, all right. General operations, any questions on this page?
Uh yes. Yeah, what is there uh uh under uh group life insurance, is down, I'm. It's down, almost near the bottom. Uh, GL Mutual of America, we haven't had it before, but now it's in the budget at twenty-three thousand four hundred.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, so that is the group life insurance that covers the employees. Um, when I checked the system, it was not being paid. So I am actively going in to, um, you know, make payments on those insurance. So that is, so the twenty-three thousand is, um, what will be due for twenty-twenty-six.
So we haven't been paying group life insurance for how long?
Uh, but since I got there, it wasn't being paid.
Was it supposed to be paid?
I thought it was an automatic payment, but when I reviewed it, because we were getting bills saying, um, it's paid, but when I reviewed it recently, I realized, no, these are not being paid.
I think I need to review all our policies and everything else, because somebody could have lost their life and they would have no insurance.
Mm-hmm, so I am actively working on that too.
That's scary, thank God nobody, you know, didn't need it, because they wouldn't have it. How much, how much, how much the policy insure for, for each employee, what's the amount for, um?
I would have to get back to you on that.
Alright, let me know how much that is.
You didn't get notify- notifications that?
That's awesome.
Something lapse?
No, no, it, it, it didn't lapse, it, it is still active. It's on a recent review, I realized that, um, these were not coming to me, and the account is still there. So I have to do some reviews and start correcting that. You know?
Councilman Jones?
Yeah, thank you, Council President, sometimes those insurance companies, when, if you don't pay your policy, and you have enough in your policy to pay the policy. Then they'll just go ahead and pay it, so you, we need to find out also from that, whoever the carrier is. How, if, if you're saying, if they're saying it was being paid, we need to know how it was being paid.
Yeah, I will follow up with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one, and it might be on, so Mutual of America administers this life, group life insurance policy?
It, it used to be Mutual of America, but now it's a different company that is operating, that is managing that, um. I don't remember their name, but I'll get that information for you too, but it was an arm of Mutual of America. And, um, and recently, during my reviews of everything, that's what I, I kind of found what was happening.
Alright, thank you.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Think we're pretty much there, and let me just go over some. More town center, if you have any questions last time. Veterans, sorry. Veterans Memorial. The Armors Market. When it's all done. And we're, we're to the Gold Room. Any questions on the Gold Room?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir, Councilman Herring.
Okay, where are the positions for the event crew chief, the event, and the two crew members?
For those position, we have, um, removed them because we're going to charge people, we're going to. Use, um, staff from the Gold Room, I know we spoke about this on Monday. And, um, you had some. Um, some reservation with regard to that, Mr. Herring. Um, but I think maybe Charles could speak a little more on it, to see how we could, um. Manage this, because the point, we need to work closely with them to, so, um. To keep that function going, but Charles, you could speak a little more on that, thank you.
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Um, yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, yeah, Councilman Herring, uh, as suggested, we were recommending, uh, the potential of rolling in staff there. Um, we have done a charter search, eh, as well as look at, uh, information relative to the Enterprise Fund, and it can be charged back, we thought that can produce, uh, produce some savings. However, as mentioned before, whatever the, the council wishes, uh, with that particular, uh, situation, uh, but we do see that that is a. Feasible thing, uh, and it could fill the particular positions as discussed, but again, uh, at the will of the council. Uh, just working to try to offset some of those costs, as well as fill the vacant, uh, positions within code, as well as increase. Uh, as I mentioned before, we have one technician now that is working the Tuesday through Saturday schedule, eight-thirty to five o'clock. Uh, and we would like to be able to supplement that, to be able to provide, uh, additional coverage, uh, for the city for. Uh, those, the hours that we are opening as well, still maintaining, uh, grass cutting schedules, et cetera, um, but utilize the Gold Room staff, I mean, uh, public works staff. That essentially takes care of the maintenance of the building as a whole, uh, and then just provide that, uh, support for setup and breakdown. I know when, uh, I started here as Dire- Director Works, uh, when there was no staff there, that's exactly what we were able to do. Um, so it's a suggestion, uh, but again, at the will of the council, uh, we'll move accordingly.
Okay, uh. Um, like I said before, that's the enterprise zone, that's a business, it gotta pay for itself, you cannot take. You cannot use the city's tax dollars to, up, to prop up a business, that's what you cannot do. They, that, that needs to account for itself, we just passed legislation to take the rates up, which I said was gonna bolster the Gold Room, and it's gonna save it and bring in all this money. Now you're trying to take citizens' tax dollars to prop up the Gold Room, because citizens are gonna get paid by the tax dollars and. Uh, and, I mean, public works employees are paid by the tax dollars that come in through the city, Gold Room crew is supposed to be paid by the money that comes in through the Gold Room. Because it's the enterprise zone, so those positions need to be put back, I think, once again, you're bas- you're giving a false narrative of what the Gold Room is actually going, is actually doing. Because you're basically giving them back, you're, you're, you're doing basically what, what. In a roundabout way, what we have authority to do, and that's to waive, waive fees and waive whatever we need to for the Gold Room. The Gold Room has been, has owed the city, owed the citizens, I'm saying the citizens, because it's their tax dollars, over a quarter of a million dollars. And I think that we need to look at it closely, you took the rates up, you make them rates work for you, because that's what y'all said you wanted, that's what you said was gonna, um. Was gonna, uh, save the Gold Room. And now you're gonna sit there and try to fudge the numbers by taking people out of there, and then you're gonna show a surplus in the Gold Room, which isn't true. That is an absolute fabrication of this financial, of this budget, because that's not true. This is a business, and you need to show all the expenses for this business, that's why, that's why this is the only thing that has depreciation in it. That's why we showed depreciation on the schedule, if that's the case, then take out depreciation, and you can get your, you, you'll get rid of your surplus. If it's a business, it's a business, run it as a business, those people need to go back in there, we need to do what we need to do, and we need to look at it closely. Again, and also in the same budget. You see they're talking about, you know, you need more business, you need no bit, no more business. Then you go and cut the marketing down at twenty-five hundred dollars. It was at seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, then you cut the marketing down. And they're like, so what do you want? You, you, you're moving people out, you're not gonna market the room, you're expected to make money. That makes absolutely no sense, but then people need to be put back in that budget. And y'all need to make it work, y'all asked for the salaries, we sat there, we went round and round with these Gold Room rules, we went round and round with these Gold Room fees, y'all said that we're gonna save the Gold Room, the money was gonna come in, because I had these elaborate plans. Now all of a sudden, you're gonna sit there and fudge the numbers and say, oh, we had eighty-four thousand dollar surplus, but you took the, you took the employees out. You're gonna have one employee in there, and that's not true, that's not accurate, and that's not transparent, and we should not be dealing and operating in that, in that way. Alright, thank you.
Mr. President.
I have a question. Is this vacant? Is the Gold Room coordinator vacant?
Nope.
No, it's not.
The coordinator.
Is, is. Are these vacant now?
The crew chief is vacant, and the crew members are, uh, currently working, this was a suggestion, uh, the dean and, I talked about, uh, and. Wanted to present that, we discussed before. But again, as, as council, but it definitely isn't an intent to fudge anything, or to give a false nar- narrative, but I do appreciate the fe- the feedback.
Mr. President.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Stewart.
So what we're saying is that, the activities of the Gold Room, especially when it come to events, we will apply those staff. To work in the Gold Room, and apply that time that they work in the Gold Room, we would charge the Gold Room for those times. I- it is not a case where we are, um, you know, paying them through. The public works, but they're working in Gold Room, no, we will apply the time that they work. During events directly to the Gold Room, that was the intent, that's what we were doing in, I think, in twenty-three and twenty-four.
Well, uh, so let me. Then it defeats the purpose there, one. If I, yeah, let's say, um. I don't know, um, let's say. One of the finance and accounting people, let's say the finance accounting person makes seventy-five thousand dollars a year, right? And now we want to have our staff work the. The Gold Room, but we would charge the Gold Room. Their salary, well, then I'll be charging a higher amount to the Gold Room. See what I'm saying? So that, the hourly cost for the eighty thousand dollar person is way higher than the hourly cost for a thirty-four thousand dollar person. So they will just be increasing the expenses for the Gold Room. Is that what you're saying?
No, what we're saying is not a seventy-five thousand dollar, um, employee, we're talking about. The public works, tech one.
Okay, but, okay, let's do that, let's do that.
And what we do is apply only the hours that they work during events. To that, to that, um, to Gold Room, and this is an attempt to get the Gold Room moving, get it, get it, get it, um, active.
I understand what you're saying.
Assistance, yes.
So, so with that same concept. Um, the lowest person, the lowest salary on here, let's just, oh, that's part-time. So the lowest full-time is forty-three. Uh, that's still higher than thirty-four. So if I have multiple people filling this gap, because this is in here at part-time. And multiple people at forty-three thousand dollars doing all these things across the year, then eventually, wouldn't that be forty-three thousand dollars there?
No, it wouldn't be, because what we're looking at, you're looking at a twenty, um, it's not a twenty-eighty hours of work. It's just whenever there are events that this person would move from the. Public work over to work with the Gold Room. So in most cases, uh, events are like four hours, um, for a week, we may have free events. You know, so we, we are not going to be hitting a, um, I like, let's take, for example, this is a, um. The hours for these people is fifty percent, so we're looking at. We're looking at one thousand and forty, we're not gonna be using that amount of hours for events, I don't believe.
Okay. So, and, alright, then my last question is, then, are you guys terminating the person that's already there?
No, they're going to the public works.
Uh, Mr. Wood, I see you're all new, uh, go ahead.
Yes, President Harris, I think, um, if I can just jump in, I think what we're acknowledging is that, even at halftime, depending on the week, it fluctuates, and so there's not. Necessarily enough of events to, um, uh, to, to fill the entirety of that, of that shift, and so. We do, um, have the benefit of using Gold Room staff, um, to do other things related to the Gold Room, but would probably be in the PW capacity, so. Cleaning the Gold Room, supporting that side of the facility, also the community room, um. Uh, that we have, uh, next to the, uh, police stub station, um, they take care of that as well, and so. There are some advantages that we're able to leverage through, um, these individuals being part-time, um, as it ebbs and flows. Uh, with the booking of the Gold Room, uh, so I think the question, the decision point that we have, uh, staff is, um. Making sure that we capture all of the dollars, all of the cents, all of the events, um, and even the in-kind, uh, dollars. Um, for events that the Gold Room may not charge, or events that, um, may have the fee waived, should we be capturing that as an in-kind, um. Uh, donation, if you will, um, for the Gold Room, so that we can see the true cost and the true, um, revenue of the Gold Room. And if we can get that direction, I think we'll be able to provide a true analysis of what the Gold Room really is bringing in, what the real costs are. Um, and then also capturing, hopefully, the time that is not spent, um, on specific events. But their staff are doing things that would otherwise be taken up by Public Works, since the building is in a, is in the government facility, um. You know, I think if we could really del- uh, dive deep into the, uh, analytics and the budgets of those things, we can come back next year with a very clear picture. Of what the staff is doing that is really city-related functions versus what is Gold Room-related functions, um, as well as a true. Um, assessment of what the Gold Room is bringing in, in terms of revenue, as well as in-kind, um, so if, if that's. The will and direction of the council, I think we can use this year to, uh, really hone in with those specific, um. KPIs, if you will, and, um, and then we'll be able to, I guess, present a fuller picture to the council next year, and then. Allow the council to determine what direction they'd like to go with the Gold Room.
Uh, 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 one, one more question, um, so, uh, I, I understand a little bit better now. What happens with the actual events? So who staffed the actual events? So I understand using, like, Pub Works for, for. Well, actually, yeah, there will all be events, won't, won't they, so who, who mans the events, will, will still be outside, will still be regular staff?
Um, so, uh, if I may, Council President, um.
Mm-hmm.
Using what we did when, I did come on board before there was a staff, we would know what the schedule would be, we still do have the coordinator, um. She would be able to schedule events and then give us a schedule for coverage, um, my thought process. Uh, was to make sure we had, uh, scheduling done that was similar to hours, um, Saturday and or Sunday. Um, which would primarily be to cover the necessary Public Works coverage, from trash pickup to servicing, uh, the building. Um, and then incorporate that schedule, uh, the events, uh, into their, uh, weekly schedule. Um, and make, make adjustments accord, adjustments.
Uh, weekly schedule, um, and make, make adjustments accord, adjustments accordingly, uh, that's the thought process.
So, what's the schedule now for Public Works? What time does the last Public Works person get off?
Um, we've now made the adjustment where we have, uh, Public Works, uh, here from eight thirty to five P M. Uh, Tuesday through Saturday, uh, we are adding an, another person, either on a Sunday through Thursday shift. And they'll also be working, uh, a later shift, now Sunday, of course, will, will fluctuate a bit, but, um. To provide that cover, coverage, uh, until the building closes, um, during the week. Uh, and then also, again, to help with trash pickup on Saturdays or the weekends.
Okay, I, I, I don't mind giving leeway to see how it can work. Um, sometimes you gotta try things out, the, oh, the, the concern I have is that, um. This is probably, uh. A few things, one, if I apply to Public Works. With the expectation that I'm gonna get off at three o'clock, and then we switch the hours from eight thirty to five, and now we're saying that part of my regular schedule. Might include nights. Uh, I don't. That's a hard pill to swallow, right? So how you gonna tell somebody that. Had come in, came in with the expectation of working eight thirty to five, that all, you know, how you gonna work? You know, um, let's, let's say we have a late, a late, uh, event, now you have to work at, you know, nine thirty at night.
Um, a- a- again, the thought process again with the two crew members that are currently working, uh, they are very much accustomed to that particular schedule.
Oh, okay, so you, you, you would. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I apologize for opening up the meeting, I'm just literally just trying to understand it, and so maybe. I'll digress and think about it some more to, hopefully better articulate. Or maybe we could discuss this, since this personnel related after, in, in the executive session after this.
Yes. Because this isn't personnel related, this is actually, uh, uh, related to how this business is gonna run. Um, they wanna take people out of the goal, and like I just said, you're taking these people out of the goal room, and you showing people now, citizens a budget. A goal room budget with a surplus, and they do not have a surplus, and like you said, a prime example, what you said. These people, they're gonna be making forty three thousand dollars, they gotta set up and break down, which is gonna be more than four hours. And they could have two or three events in the goal room, plus at night, so they're gonna get overtime for that, if they're under the Public Works Department. That's the, that's why we had them part time, so we don't, so they don't, so they can schedule them, they, they ain't flexible hours. Cause then, you know, you don't ever know where the events are gonna roll, then they're gonna be here Saturday and could possibly be here Sunday, you're gonna be under part work, you're gonna have to pay them overtime for anything over forty hours. It makes absolutely no sense to sit there and say you're gonna take this department and you're gonna analyze it. How you gonna analyze it if you haven't even got the people in the positions to see how much it's actually gonna cost you, cause you're basically fudging the numbers now? That's basically what you're doing, you're fudging the numbers to try to make it look like it's a profitable event, you know, or it's a profitable department, and it isn't. And we should not be mixing a business and using taxpayers' money to fund the goal room, which should be running on its own as enterprise zone, you do not take. You do not mix the tax dollars like that, the citizens are already propping up, so now the citizens will get a six percent tax, a six cent tax increase. Uh, increasing their assessments, and they're gonna have to also foot the bill for the goal room that's probably funding itself. We cannot sit here and do that to the citizens in this community, and if the city manager and assistant city manager and that. They can't think of a better way to do this, then we have, we have a problem, because you need to put the people back in that position. We just raised all the rates on everything in the goal room that they said was gonna make money, and you need to see how that works, that's where you start. And then you go, you got, you go from there, because they said that they, all, everybody said that, well, these new rates are gonna bring in all this money. So let it bring in the money, we haven't even gotten to the point where we even signed a charter new rate before we sitting, gonna sit there and pull people out. And I'm thinking, if you're gonna pull people out, then you need to pull them out permanently and not add them to the citizens' tax roll. This is, 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 is very misleading, it's very, very misleading, this budget, and, and to charge it back, again. They gotta charge back every hour that they're doing public works where they're making more money to the goal room, so like you said. They're gonna be spending more than they were if they were, um, if they weren't. I mean, if they stayed in the position, part time. Where they don't get overtime. So I'm not understanding this whole, we not, we need to analyze it, we need to look at this, we need to look, no, you're not analyzing anything, you, my thing is. The goal room has been functioning for years, where it made a profit, they need to get it back to that point. And then you're gonna cut down the marketing, the marketing budget, so what are you gonna do different? You're gonna cut the marketing budget down to twenty five hundred, and you tell me you're barely gonna market the room, one melon, and that's it. Your marketing budget is gone. You know, so I don't, I, I, I don't see no sense in this, I think, again, I think it's just not being transparent with the citizens. I think it's misleading to citizens, and we need, we need not to go into, uh, a new, um, administration or new council. Hiding things from the citizens. And that's exactly what they're doing with this budget, this goal room need to pay for itself, it is a business, and that's like, if you had a business, you're not gonna have somebody from the. From cit- from the city of Glanard and come and run your business, and they're gonna, you're gonna charge it against the, the, the city of Glanard to help fund that business to keep it propped up. You don't, you, we don't, we don't, we don't prop up businesses, that's not what a, a, a government does. If that, 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 that's a, 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 a enterprise zone, it's been considered, it's been made an enterprise zone. It needs to stay enterprise zone, and if it doesn't function as the enterprise zone, we need to decide what we're gonna do, and we need to shut it down and turn it into offices. Because again, if you're not gonna make it work, if you're not gonna be transparent and make it work the way it needs to work, then there, there's no need to even run it. Because it can work, cause it worked plenty, plenty of years before, and I'm not understanding what the big issue is here with this now. Especially since we sat there and took up the rates in this room, and it was supposed to be the wh- where all and be all, so now the rates are up. They haven't even tried to see where the rates are going, or how they're gonna book this room, or how many, how many people are gonna book it at the new rates. We don't even know if that's gonna work, people may see the rates and they say, I'm not gonna book it at all. So I, I think it's, that's not being transparent, I think it's, I think it's misleading, I, I, I think it's a terrible disservice to the citizens in this community. To sit there and having proper business that's supposed to be running itself. Thank you.
Well, let me say that I don't think it's being done intentionally, I, I do appreciate new ideas. Uh, Mr. Simpson and, and Mr. Uh, Wood, uh, so I don't, I don't. I'm not of the mindset that you guys are trying to mislead the citizens, um. I do think that a robust plan needs to be presented, um. So we can finally make a decision on this goal room. Um, I'm willing to put support behind whatever we need to do to get it up and running again, cause I also understand that what worked. Three years ago or five years ago is not the same thing that worked this year, so what is it that we need to kind of put the goal room in a, in a, um. In a great position to succeed, and if there's nothing we can do to put in position to succeed. Um, then we have to, you know, make adjustments. Um, I just, I just need to, I just need to have a plan, I just need a plan presented, and. For me to understand that plan, and I'm willing to support new ideas. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Council President, I'm also in agreement to, uh, coming up with some new ideas and putting some things in place and trying to see. Uh, where we're gonna go with the goal room, of course, the goal room is not, uh, making the amount of money that it was making. Uh, back in the day, because we had different events back then. They, uh, had events where they had cabarets, and they had all kinds of things that, um, people were doing. Th- in this day and time, uh, a lot of people aren't doing cabarets, and they're not doing the events, like, uh, I think at one time they had, uh. There was, um, uh, playing cards, gun gambling, or some, some, some type of, uh, uh, event going on at the goal room that was. Uh, being, the goal room was being booked every, every, every Saturday to have that event, they don't do that, those types of things anymore. You know, and some of the events that this, the goal room was having, the BYOLs, uh, the county doesn't allow them to happen, they don't allow, uh. Go-go and, and different types of things, so of course, we're not gonna make the money that we made back in the day, because the events have changed. People have changed, their, uh, their needs have changed, so, as to what they want, so. I'm in agreement that we need to find, figure out something to do, if it has to be an enterprise zone, uh. Then we need to come up with something to, um, make it happen, but like I said, people's, uh. We can look at who has, um, rented the room thus far, and look at last year's, uh, ev- uh, event calendar and see. Who rented it and what type of events, events it was to determine, you know. Uh, in the year before, to determine what kind of events people are, are having and how they're using it. I, I don't, I don't, I really don't, I look at the goal room now, and I, I don't believe that we'll ever make the money that we was making. Years ago, I remember the goal room being Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday, that it would, something was always going on at the goal room. And, uh, it's, it's just not happening anymore like that, so. Uh, if it does, if it has to be an enterprise zone, then we need to figure out how to make it just that, and if we have to come up with some different strategies. And ideas that people come up with, we need to put those in place and see if they work. Whether they work or not, if they don't work, then we move to the next plan, you know, define something, you know, to, uh. Get it to the, uh, the, um, dollar amount that the city is trying to make off of it, so. Uh, that's my thought. I thank you, Mr. Simpson and Mr. Uh, Wood for coming up with a, with a strategy that we could probably use. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones, um.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Um, I would recommend though that we increase the marketing from the twenty five hundred we have there. Maybe back to the seventy five hundred, cause we definitely have to do some marketing.
And so with this being taken out of here, is it somewhere else? Is this in Public Works? Where is it?
So I really could not come up with a figure right away. To determine how much we would need for, um, staff coverage.
So it's nowhere in the budget, which means.
Right, so we're, we're just testing to see how best we could get this work.
So I'm gonna put these back in. Uh, cause currently, if we took them out. Then those people gotta go. Which I'm pretty sure that's not what you guys are trying to do, um, cause I think what you were trying to do was put these, have these moved over here. But I don't see them here, so. They have to stay here, does that make sense?
No, the positions were the, um, the tech, I think it's a tech one and the custodian.
Oh, that is there.
So, so unless we, we could take maybe a percentage of those, um, pays and put there.
Oh, okay, so. Now. Is this person active? Who, who are these people?
Custodian, okay, so the custodian is vacant, and I think it's a tech.
Tech two.
It's a tech two that's vacant. So that's my, uh, there, the tech two.
I, I see.
Not in the part time, yeah.
So this person is vacant.
It's vacant, yes.
And. Yes.
Custodian.
Oh, Mr. President, may I?
I, I think I know where you're going, but. Can I, um, just finish with this, and then I think I know where you're going, so then I'll just go to you, um. And so you're saying that this. And this.
No, the two vacant, the two vacant positions.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're saying that this, let me highlight it, so that we see that it, what it is. In orange, you saying this. And this are to be for the, um, the goal room.
Yeah, the two people that are in goal would move over to those positions, and maybe we could say. Um. Maybe twenty percent of those. Dollar amounts would go to.
Okay, so. I don't know where Councilman Harris about to go, um, but I will say, and then I'll get, turn it over to him, but you can't, you can't do that. One. These two, one makes twenty one thousand, one makes thirty four thousand, then we put them over here, and currently, in the budget. They're gonna be making forty three thousand. And forty four thousand, well, I, I wasn't aware of that, um. I don't know if any other council member was aware of that, uh, so just. Like I said, I, I, and, and maybe it's my misunderstanding, I thought I was getting there, I think Mr. Wood helped me get further along and understanding. And, and Mr. Simpson helped me get a little bit further along, you guys just need a. A thorough plan that you guys can explain to us, that can help me to further understand, because. In, in, in this form, I'm not saying that it's intention, it's intentional, but it is misleading. And confusing. Because it, right here, I don't, this is full time, I don't see where this is gonna be twenty percent of anything, I don't see where this is gonna be twenty percent of anything. And when we went over this budget, it was not explained to us, hold on, let me see if it's in here. It's not in the comments. So it's just. I'm just saying, just pull it together, as it relates to having a, a, a full out plan that you can sell us on, that can help us. You know, get behind it, Mr. Wood?
Yes, President Curtis, uh, I think, thank you, so, uh, I just wanna be clear, so what we'll do is we'll move everything back to as it was originally. And then if we can come forward with a, like you said, more robust comprehensive plan that we can articulate. Then we'll make changes, but until then, let's just move it back to how it was structured previously.
So, but with that, do these stay here, these two positions?
Those two are currently vacant, correct, yeah, so they would stay there, but we would just zero out. Or, or they're, they're currently vacant, yeah.
And, and with us putting everything back, we will not be looking to fill those positions. Or, or will we be looking to fill those positions solely for Public Works?
Correct.
Okay, correct, which side of that, of that correct is, are we going to fill it, or are we not going to fill it?
Uh, President Curtis.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, no, those positions are open and are being advertised, and we will fill them.
Okay, alright. Uh, Councilman Aaron. Did you have any other comments?
I mean, that's what I was gonna say, I just added up the salaries for the three positions in goal room, and they're less than the two positions in public works. So I don't see where the savings is gonna be, also, I'm, I'm just saying, again. We put these positions in the public works budget because, Mr. Simpson, when you were Public Works Director. You said you needed these pub, these positions to make the Public Works Department function efficiently. Now you're gonna take these positions and put them some, put the people somewhere else, and they're not gonna work in Public Works, I mean, we. People complaining now about some of the things that's not getting done with pu- in public works, so you're gonna take. Valuable needed resources that's needed for public works, that be dedicated to public works responsibilities, and move them into the goal room. And that's why you're gonna be mixing apples and oranges, so I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, again, it's, it's, yeah, I'm, I'm done with it, I'm done, thanks.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, I think that's it, that's the, that's the last one. Uh, yeah, did I add that back? Sorry, one second. Yeah, add that back, uh. Okay, that's already, oh, we're, oh, we're, cool. With this, the question was, yeah.
Can we go, can we go back to goal room for just a moment? At the event crew member, so we have two event crew members and we have the event coordinator. Okay, yes, I'm sorry, I just double checked to make sure we were.
Do I need to put, do I need to put this back, that nineteen? Do I need to put, do I need to put this back at nineteen thousand or no?
Uh, yeah, I just need to confirm where we were. Before the changes.
I think, uh, Mr. President, I think those positions should get the three percent also. The cola.
Yeah, you, you don't have to do that. I mean, um.
I got it.
All right. Okay, great. So then the next question will be, um, so if this is a hundred seventy-six thousand. Two hundred fifty-six, do we have enough revenue to support it? And if we don't, um, is council willing to, you know, support? Operations. If it cannot be a zero, I mean, a negative budget.
Mr. President, can I ask a question? Did they factor in the new rates in their, in the proposed income that they have? In this budget? Or are they just looking at the previous years?
Oh, yes, we look at the previous years.
So you're not taking into attack, uh, to account that, um.
No, I didn't get that. I didn't get that information. I'm so sorry.
You need to get that and, and, and factor that into it. Cause the rates.
That will be beneficial. Important piece of information.
Yes, it's the curages. You could pull it down to the bottom.
Always at the bottom?
Yes.
So you're saying that you don't know if this has to increase rates?
No, those don't have the increased rate. That is our projection without the new rates.
He's looking to that.
Yes.
That's, you know, that's just it. Important information to include in the budget.
Will do.
Okay, Councilman Harry, did you have anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, so with that, this is the second iteration of the budget. I think we're in a good spot. I think the only two open items. Um. Let's see, I don't know if there's two open items. One open item is actually doing the enterprise budget, um. I think we're done with this. Public Works. Uh, you guys will get back with Mr. Herring about, uh, Councilman Herring about overtime. Uh, but at this point, I think we're, you know, at a good point to. To move forward. With the budget. So, Mr. Stewart, I believe that the constant yield advertisement went out today. And so it's for next Thursday at what time?
It's next Thursday at seven o'clock.
So next Thursday at seven o'clock, we'll have a public hearing for the constant yield. And then we would need to pass the budget. So council members timeline. Is that Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, we could do that on the same day. We can have a public hearing especially.
Yeah, okay. Um, so we'll have the public hearing next Thursday, uh, by then. The updated rates should be, um, in the budget. And I think still, unless some, someone corrected them wrong, there'll still be the issue of whether the council wants to support. The operations, which I think will be the, um, you know, wisest thing to do. Instead of just trying to cut. This off at the last minute, uh, funding it, whether it be a loan or. A grant, I don't, I don't know how that'll work. Um, how the council wants to do that, but it will need to be done to balance the budget. All right, um, so with that, this portion is over. It, does council still need to, uh, uh, adjourn to executive session?
Uh, one other thing, Mr. President, before we do adjourn this meeting, um, and we gotta advertise this ordinance. For the budget as an emergency ordinance, so we can vote on it the same day.
Yep, 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 um, so one, two, three. Uh, yeah, it, it takes, uh, super majority, it takes five to make it an emergency ordinance. Uh, so I, I will encourage, um. You know, council members to do a, a thorough analysis of the budget and if you have any questions, to raise those questions. So we can address it at that time, so that we can move forward with, uh, the vote on, um, next Thursday. What date is that, Mr. Stewart?
That's the twelfth.
The twelfth, next Thursday the twelfth.
Yes.
All right, uh, and, and so, Councilman Aaron or Mr. Simpson. Did we need to finish up the executive meeting or were you guys done?
Yes, Council President, uh, if there are no other. Comments or discussions from any council members, uh, I, I think we have heard accordingly.
All right, council members satisfied with what you guys discussed in the executive meeting? I'll take that as a yes, cause nobody answered. So any last minute comments from council members before we adjourn? Here are none. The time is ten thirty, uh, and this meeting is now adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.